Combined all three divisions to one this last year, which you'll have the increases due to a court reporter for nine months. Currently, they use verbatim. It's an outside agency that comes in for court reporting. Due to the caseload increasing, we looked at the cost of it and it's cheaper to get a court reporter to come in. And I think the judge who is new to the seat prefers to have a real, live, breathing person that's under him to help do the court reporting. But we only budgeted for nine months because verbatim ends in December.
The contract.
Yes. Justice of the piece number one, the decrease is due to rent. We're not renting anymore. Our building's finally finished. They're moved in and hopefully everything's going well. JP two, the increase is due to COLA. Same thing with JP three as well as four. County supervision, the increase is due to contract services of $7,000. The health department, you'll see a decrease of $88,000. We have a project that's going on, I think, currently to replace the lab floor. And so some of the savings is coming from there. For the public defender's office, you see zero because it's funded by grant currently?
The public defender's office has requested two positions that we did not include in the, in this requested budget. One is a juvenile attorney. I don't remember the other one. Where is it?
I think it's just a misdemeanor.
Just a regular attorney. Yeah, just a public defender attorney. But we did not include them in, in here. We were trying to stick within the grant funds available through September 30th of 2024.
So if, if we don't get grant funds, but that position was needed there, are you putting a position there but not funding it? Or you're not?
No, but we might have to discuss that through this process.
Okay.
We might put just health insurance in.
For the sheriff's office, I believe they're here as well and they'd like to speak on their behalf. Portion, the increase is 1.2 million. We have restructured their departments to help better retain employees, hopefully. That's part of the increase as well as a, they have an armored vehicle that they're sharing between the three entities and it should be completed hopefully this next year. Likes to pull contract made from Capitol to the regular department. It's a software they use to help write policies as well as a TLO replacement. They also asked for additional positions that will not be proposed this far. And so I would like for them to come up and if they'd like to speak.
What is TLO?
TLO, Texas, what does it stand for, Garrett?
Texas license.
Uh, Texas something, something.
License officers.
Yeah, Texas licensed officers. It's a, it's a program where you can look up people, right? And find people, database. Good afternoon, Wayne.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. Our county today, oh wait, wrong meeting. Thank you for the opportunity to speak for a few minutes about the requested budget. First, I want to thank the Budget Office for all their hard work. It gets better every year, working closer together and collaborative process to try and find what the county can afford and what departments need to deliver the essential services. And so it's been a good process and Katie and Nina have really done a good job. So I thank you.
Agreed.
I want to, I want to tell you, I appreciate that, hearing that too. My assessment's the same. And I think it's particularly significant with Senate Bill 22 moving into the futures as to what we're going to take advantage of and what makes sense. So thank you.
So since you brought up Senate Bill 22, for those that don't know, that's a rural law enforcement act that was passed by the legislature that provides a grant for agencies under 250,000, maybe 300,000, under 300,000 to meet certain minimum salaries in the sheriff's office. We are still working on that, part of the budget. We have some ideas put together on that and we'll be bringing that to the Budget Office soon. The purpose of me speaking this afternoon is to talk about three positions that were not included in the requested budget. These are positions that are a high priority for the sheriff's office and that I hope the court will consider. I'll just talk about them briefly and answer any questions you may have. The first is a reentry, I'm sorry, a case manager for our reentry program. A couple of years ago, the court and the commissary fund worked together to have a reentry specialist. That person uses some software, proprietary software we bought last year to triage people in our custody at the jail to determine those that would be most impacted by the programs we offer. The next step in that process is to put a case manager in place that will help people make the transition from detention back into the community. When we can connect people with housing, transportation, education, healthcare, and employment, then we are much more likely to see that person be successful and, and not return to our facility. So I see this position as an investment for the county. We've been very fortunate to this point. We thought that that jail would meet our needs till about 2025. The current trajectory that we're on, it's going to exceed that. And that's millions and millions of dollars saved by having those bed space, that bed space available. And I see this program as one that will further extend the life of that jail. And we would only have, we would only have to divert a few individuals to easily recover the cost of this position. So I hope you'll consider that as an addition to this budget. Do you have any questions about that one?
But you're, okay, but what you're saying is, let me make sure I understand.
Speak up, please.
What you're saying is, is what makes sense, what this really relates to is you feel like reentry supports us keeping a lower population and that lower population costs us less in the long run and we make up the difference.
Exactly.
Thank you.
And a reduction of crime rate.
Exactly.
Do you, do you offhand, I don't mean to put you on the spot, do you offhand know what cost per inmate per year? I mean.
Our cost per day fluctuates year to year, but I would be safe or comfortable saying that our per day rate per person in our custody is about $65.
So this pays for itself pretty quick.
Yes.
How much was that, Wayne?
Our, our cost, about $65 per day.
I guess most of that is.
Personnel. Yes, sir.
Yeah. And I mean, the thing that, you have to keep aware that, you know, we're required to keep, I think the, the rule of thumb is one to 48, which means you've got to have five if you're going to have your 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And so if you take one person out of jail, it doesn't mean it goes down $65 a day.
That's right.
Because we don't fire those jailers, you know, every time you put somebody in or take them out. So it's, I think that's what you have to kind of keep, keep an eye on too, you know, it's, that personnel cost is going to be there unless we drop a significant number of inmates.
Sheriff?
Yes.
I have a question. What, what's the anticipated salary of this case manager?
And I don't remember that.
94083?
And I believe that includes benefits.
Total, yeah, 940, total package.
Judge, in response to your comments, I agree that when we do the staffing analysis, that the state standard is one detention officer available to respond to an emergency for every 48 inmates plus their staff to do essential functions. So in one sense, you are exactly right that, you know, you don't just get to send five people home by letting somebody out. But our population fluctuates daily. And so even though we may not see 48 people leave, that population may put us under a threshold and it certainly saves us on variable cost on daily operations.
In other words, legislation that got us the opportunity for people who were, I guess this is the right word, was blue warrants, but people who have certification to be into TDCJ, but we still have to hold them because they haven't been admitted yet. I think the number for that was like $40 or something?
Right.
That came out. So ultimately, it's costing us on those, it's now only costing us about $20 a day as opposed to what it had been.
So Commissioner, if I may kind of fill in some of the edges on that.
Sure.
The legislature passed a bill that allowed us to be reimbursed for more instances, both on criminal cases, people pending transfer to TDC and for mental health, people been, pending transfer for.
Yes.
Restoration. The fact of the matter is, is that that doesn't kick in till the 45th day and the state normally meets that 45-day number. And so it'd be, it's going to be a very small number.
So it's not retroactive?
No.
Okay.
Yes. Any other questions?
It's always in the details, isn't it?
Yes, sir. The second of the three positions I'd like to discuss is a position for dispatcher. We currently have five full-time dispatchers covering an operation that is 1.5 FTEs 24 hours a day. If we use the commonly accepted numbers of one relief or five people to relieve every one full-time 24-hour FTE, we really need about seven and a half people to cover that dispatch operation at the sheriff's office. As I said, we currently have five. So we don't have a relief factor for that operation. And as a matter of fact, in four months, we had to cover about 120 overtime shifts for people being out and for a vacancy. And it would be really helpful to our operation to have a relief person to fill in when one of those people needed to be off. Right now, our first backup is the supervisor. There's a supervisor that will come in at night rather than their normal day shift to cover a vacancy or to cover an opening. And then beyond that, we just have to find somebody that can, can do that work. So the addition of one position in dispatch would be very helpful for us. You have any questions about that one? Okay. The last of the three is courthouse security deputy. Very similar situation here. We consider the minimum at courthouse security to be two people operating the security operation at the door and one rover. We currently only have five people assigned to that operation and one supervisor. We find it difficult to consistently meet that coverage at the bare minimum. And we frequently get requests from the courts to spend more time upstairs, to spend more time along, out in the hallways while court's going on. And we want to, we want to do that. We want to go up there and patrol those hallways when we've got jurors in the building, when they have high-profile cases going on. We want to be up there in that hallway, both as a, both as a demonstration of public service, but also of course, safety. And so an additional courthouse security officer would allow us to provide relief to meet those minimal numbers, but also more frequently be up on the other floors of the courthouse. Any questions about that request? Well, thank you again for everybody. I appreciate.
If you had.
Yes.
Sheriff, if you had to prioritize those three positions, what, what would be your number one priority of those three?
The case manager, the reentry case manager would be number one, dispatch number two, courthouse number three.
Thank you.
And I know that there's a big item listed here that was for, you had some reclassifications. Could you kind of go into that a little bit and just kind of the broad, not, not the details, but the big picture of reclassification?
I'm willing to answer any questions. However, that was a proposal the Budget Office made that we've worked together to create some salary ranges. And I think Nina is planning to talk about that.
Oh, okay. Yeah, or I just, you know, I just.
Use this while we play musical chairs.
As you know, we live in, we, right now, a lot of our positions are on what we call the group and step chart. Once the budget is adopted and the positions are set, it's hard to change those positions. It is hard to fill positions, especially if you're finding someone with a lot of experience and they're currently being paid more than what we can offer. Right now, at the, under the sheriff's office as well as the jail and on the medical side, CSISD, security support, we went ahead and reviewed everything to see where their actual pay is at, where they're being budgeted at, and how much money is not being spent due to either positions not being filled or positions not being paid at budget. So we tried to come up with a solution to help them adjust their salary during the year without Commissioners Court, without them bringing items to Commissioners Court to move groups and steps around. And so this way, instead of putting them on a group and step chart, we did a range. And with this range, they're allowed to hire at $0 to the max. But they currently, for many, many years, I don't know how long they had a salary ladder, they used it, they used that salary ladder regarding the merit. And we wanted to establish a merit within the salary range. And so since they had a ladder, we went ahead and looked at a system to give them the increases that are warranted. A lot of times, man, you're, they get TLO hours, which is like licensing.
TCO.
TCO. Okay, TCO hours. Because they have to have it or they receive another certification, but the position they're in, they can't receive an increase because it comes with extra duties, right? But they can't receive an increase until hopefully the next year. But if Commissioners Court doesn't approve a merit, their salary ladder doesn't work, nor does the increase come. And so with this, we, we created something hopefully that will work. And currently on the screen, you can see that you have a mid, mid, and max. Make it a little bigger. I looked at the positions that were being paid at the highest. And we came up with a solution to have merit included. And this should allow them to work this for the next couple of years, as long as we, you know, continue giving COLA increases, you know, whatever. But their merit's going to be tied into this. And they're, they have currently. I don't think it's approved yet, a new revised career ladder that will allow certain increases throughout the year to help retain employees.
Well, I know y'all did a lot of really great work last year between opening budget conversations and the last one to target the specific positions that you wanted to have an impact on being able to recruit and retain. And I really like that. And then also the other, I appreciate, one of my biggest concerns was is that we were not specifically able to target those positions where retention and recruitment were the big issues. And I really appreciate y'all working and y'all working together to come up with and target that, the other one that I had. And I think we've addressed that one too, is the 16 or 17 people last year, but I think it was more than that, who are not able to have a full-time job at the, at the county and be able to support a life in our community. So those are great. Thank you for that.
And we made it to where that positions, so their lieutenants, their sergeants, they're in the same group across the board. So they're able to move easier between the jail, the administration, CSISD, or medical. And they wouldn't have to worry about moving funds around to support the increases because sometimes one person or one position, the person in that position is being paid more than the position they're being transferred to with the same title, like lieutenant or sergeant. This way, the money's already there, they're able to transfer, they can make it without waiting two, two weeks, maybe a month before it comes to Commissioners Court. So we, we're giving it back to them to hopefully do what they need to do to keep employees.
Fantastic retention tool. And speaking with y'all yesterday about this, one thing I really like is that the sheriff's department worked with Budget Office and came up with this. And I hope it's a very big success. And Katie's pointing at Nina, so I guess we'll give Nina a lot of the credit too. But I'm excited to see it work out.
IT too, because they have to go through testing and HR.
Everyone that worked on that, yeah. And just the idea that you have a member of your team in March that might need to be looking at an increase in, in, in pay and they don't need to wait for October for it to be budgeted, or you don't have need, need to come back to Commissioners Court for it. That flexibility gives you to make the decisions as administrator of that big department, or as the sheriff, I really applaud everyone's effort on that. I hope it works out great.
I think it, I think it makes sense in our largest department within, so to speak, that you have more local autonomy to be able to make decisions that relate to what the needs of your department is. And I think, I think that's great. Instead of being regimented and having to have the back and forth process, heck, it'll probably, efficiency-wise, maybe save some time too, as far as that goes, which I know y'all are, you got a lot of people working a lot of hours and a lot of overtime if I look at things. So maybe it'll free up some of that too, but.
Yes, and people get tired. I mean, people, people get tired.
Thanks again.
Yes, sir.
More things, more things to come with Senate Bill 22. And here we go.
Right.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Well, I would just ask you, as you deliberate all of this information, we've got a lot of people asking for stuff that, that you will seriously consider the three positions that we've asked for. We've worked hard to identify those three priorities and would appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Chief, sir, would you like to have a chance to make a comment about anything? You're more than happy to. I want to give you an opportunity. Just keep it short. Okay.
Yeah, thank you. I just, I really just want to say thank you to Nina again. This is, she tries to downplay it a little bit, but all the work was done over here. And I think that we have a system that fits into it. And it not only, the thing that I wanted to mention about this specifically was that it does reduce a lot of work for other departments as well. You know, all the, all the paperwork that goes in, and especially the crunch in September, doing 120 PAFs and trying to figure out where everything's going to be. But really, which I'll touched on, that opportunity to reward people for making some kind of achievement in education or a certification at the time that it happens is really something that we've been looking to do. It's a, an instant way to reward people and keep them on board. And that's critical for our operations. A lot of talk about staffing lately and what that leads to is we have a lot of folks that are in supervisory positions that haven't been there very long. And we need to keep them where they are so they continue to learn and get better and provide better services for the, for the community. And so we're just thankful to be able to take part in that. And lots and lots of work went into it. And it, it's the kind of stuff that I like because it fixes a bunch of different things at once, in our opinion. And we have a career advancement schedule that's very objective. So specific requirements have to be met to get each increase. And that's important to us for a lot of reasons. But we have so many employees, there has to be a fair system that everybody understands. And so I wanted y'all to know that, that we have a pretty solid system now. We're adapting it for this. That'll be objective. And a person coming on board will have a clear vision of their career path. And they can see their entire career and what they need to do to get from point A to point Z. And hopefully, we have some lifelong career employees. And those folks are always the best for the county.
And you know, for recruitment as well, you know, they could, this is, or salary ranges, it's something more visual than guessing what it's going to be every year.
But it's very different, no doubt. And, you know, it can be confusing. And so we're just open, if anybody, not now, but, you know, because I know we've got to move on. But we're happy to discuss any part of it, if there's some, if there's some confusion about it. And, and, but we think it's for the best. And so.
I want to reiterate that again too, because in that stuff from TXLTAP that I gave to y'all, and we went over after hearing that presentation at VG Young, it's, yes, salary and compensation is one thing, but it's one of a multiple of different things. And, you know, anticipation of a career process.
Yes.
And those types of things were all mentioned in there. So I really appreciate y'all taking that information and putting it to, putting it to work. I look forward to celebrating the success and whatever we need to do to tweak it going forward. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm just truly blessed to work in Brazos County in the court. Judges have always been supportive of our operations and we just really appreciate it. And, you know, we, we know we're asking, but we're just asking for stuff that we need to provide good services. And I'm thankful that we're here. There's some counties that don't see it that way. And I appreciate y'all's vision for, for the future of the county. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief, for keeping it short. As you can see, the jail medical increased due to the salary ranges that we have restructured. For the sheriff's office, CSISD, these are school security over at College Station ISD, you're going to see a big increase. But this increase is, as well as for the COLAs and the salary ranges, College Station ISD reimburses the county to, to have these positions on their campuses. And so whatever we expense, College Station ISD pays the county back. Okay?
Yeah, it was in, in, I know they have a proposed budget out there because I saw the tombstone ad about their proposed tax rate. That was all, this part is included in their budget?
Correct. I think Lieutenant House has presented it to the school board and they're acceptable of it. I know that there's also a new statute that every single campus also has, has to have a security officer on there. From last understanding, that what the College Station ISD Board as well as sheriff's office are trying to work up a planning situation because there's a lot of campuses out there that do not have security officers. And we're going to look at, hopefully they're going to put a plan together to where we can grow it yearly and not all at once because it's so hard to have a patrol officer on these campuses. Took us several months this last year to place one.
Yeah, when was, I remember the legislation, but when was the standard that needed to be met on that?
September 1st.
Okay, so September 1st, they have to be in compliance with that.
Right. And they met last night to, I think they are on contract with a security company, the security guards, and all the schools that were contracted.
Okay.
Heard that on the news.
So that qualifies. That qualifies. In lieu, okay. But ultimately, it would be better if we pursue working together with them and extending our relationship, you think? Super, thanks.
For Constable one, the increase is going to be due to the COLA increase as well as Constable two, three, the same as well. Constable.
Should there be four?
Yes, it should be four. Arrow number two. For juvenile services, of course, they have a juvenile board that oversees juvenile services. And so it's a total as their whole budget regarding them. You're going to see a decrease of 990,000. budget regarding them. You're going to see a decrease of $990,000. Portion of that decrease is every year, for the last two years, we budgeted a million dollars regarding some issues at the juvenile. We have discovered the issues there can be fixed in-house, and so we removed the million dollars. Other increases is due to the part-time custodial that will be in the proposed budget. For JJEP, increase is due to COLA. The commodities, no increase. And indigent healthcare, we're waiting to see what the tax rate will be because we have to do the 8%. And so that's staying flat until we figure that out. Emergency Rescue Plan Revenue Replacement, Are You OK program. This is a new program that was approved this year, and this is increasing that line item by $30,000. Emergency Management is increased due to COLA, as well as operational expenses increasing. Expo Center is increased by $653,000. This includes receptions with operational expenses. Event Coordinator, that is only going to be budgeted, the health benefits, as well as banquet chairs, 950 of them.
For $123,000.
Yes. As well as building maintenance contracts, painting screens, and some of the items that need to be completed at the expo. Fair Administration is due to COLA. Brazos Center, as well as due to COLA and supplies that they house for public events to come in, as well as $15,000 for countertop replacement. This project was supposed to have been done several years ago, but then we had COVID hit, and we had the COVID emergency clinic that went through the Brazos Center, so they had to be put on hold. So this is back on the table again. For the county agricultural extension, $2,500 due to our portion of employees' COLA. There's four positions that we have a contract with A&amp;M, and they partial share expenses. And so the rest is going to be the county full-time, 100% funded county employees. CPS, no increase. Family Protection Service, you're going to see an increase on this.
Do you want me to address it?
Since it's fees.
There was a, this legislative session, no, actually, the 2021 legislative session, they repealed the Family Protection Service fee. And what we had been doing is sending about 10,000 of that to Scotty's House every year, rather than, and we're sitting on 8,900. So since they repealed the fee and the funds, there will be no more incoming funds. And we asked Scotty's House if they expended at least $80,000 in counseling services, which is what the fee was for. They do. So we were going to basically do a one-time disbursement to them next year. Of course, we have to budget it to basically eliminate the money in our funds and give it to Scotty's House for their counseling services.
For County Records Management Administration, the increase is due to $17,854 because of the COLA. They have also asked for a full-time scanning position that is not planned to be in the proposed budget, and that cost is... $62,929. And I, Desmond, would you like to? So if you have any questions, you're more than happy to get Desmond or send an appointment with them to get additional information. For Court Facility Administration, we are using this, it's a fee that's coming in that's collected, but we're using it to purchase a x-ray machine for the courthouse administration that we're redoing over there, renovating. It hasn't came in yet, of course, and so this is additional rollover that we're going to have to expense. But it's one for one because we have the revenue to support it, because it's a special revenue for that division. The Roden Bridge Administration Department will increase only $31,388. Last year, we had budgeted a little bit over $4 million for Greens Prairie, and that's portion of the decrease. At the end of the year, we received the invoice, we paid it out 2022 funds. So this year, it's going to be removed. And so that's part of the decrease, as well as increases in Roden Bridge maintenance. You know, things are going up. And so, but the good thing is only increased by $31,000.
That capital outlay budget of 20 million includes 9.4. We're rolling from FY '22, '23.
Yes. For the Fleet Shop, they, this shop handles the heavy equipment, like your motor graders or bigger equipment. It's increasing by $79,000 due to repair and maintenance. A lot of the equipment that's being purchased has the wonderful chips and def fluid, which causes more things to break down. And those things cost a lot to fix. And so we're supporting the increase to make sure we have our equipment running good. This is also increasing a, well, parts and labor, that's what it is. Environmental protection, this is, we also fund our disposal sites, and this is the increase due to the contract services for dumpsters and things like that.
Yeah, that was a contract that we, that's based on the contact, contract that we just renewed Tuesday or the week before.
I don't know. I can't remember.
We extended the contract for that with Texas Commercial Waste.
Yes, yes.
That is one.
That's one of them.
Yes. Texas Commercial Waste also picks up our trash in several different areas. I think we have a roll-off container at the jail, so they pick up that one, too.
Yeah.
All right.
But this is based on that, those costs that we've renewed.
Yes, and some of them are in...
And we're good for two years on that?
For the contract, if the contract is two years, purchasing might be able to enter if that contract is two years.
I think it was an extension of existing, but I don't know.
For the BISMA and...
No, for...
Texas Waste?
No.
Texas Commercial Waste.
Yes.
It's for the, it handles the expo and the citizen collection sites and all that.
But it's two-year.
I know.
I think we rebid it, so I think it's a two-year deal with three one-year renewables.
Okay.
I think.
I couldn't remember if it was an extension or if it was...
I think we rebid. I'll get back with you.
Okay. Caitlin saying we did.
They don't ask for money. I don't remember a lot of things.
I'm just trying to keep it all under the tent.
Operating transfers, this means funding that's going out of the general fund to support other funds, capital improvement fund. It's a negative 20 million, so we have no clue where we're going to, we haven't discussed our capital items. Courthouse Security, we're moving courthouse security from courthouse security fund to the SO Administration Operational Budget. It turns out that the county general fund is supporting the expenses in the courthouse security fund. And so when it's over a certain percent, we think it's fair for the county to support that expense. And right now, we're only supporting the positions movement over in this total of five. We're leaving operational expenses there for them to use for badges and things like that. Health and Life Fund was discussed, we're transferring 1 million over to the Health and Life Fund. And Records Management is no longer, has positions in that fund.
Okay, so...
As of today.
We should anticipate, once we start talking about capital improvement fund, either we fund that with unassigned fund balance, or we fund that with, or we put it into this budget, right?
We prepared these to, in a way that we, so that we could concentrate on general fund and the tax rate, the monies raised from the tax rate versus fund balance.
Right.
Trying to, because they can be very confusing when you start combining those discussions together. So we wanted to kind of separate the two. So this is just going to be your tax-supported functions. Yeah. But yes, I think, what's the total looking at for capital?
A little bit over 7 million.
I thought it was nine with the rollover.
You have fund balance at three.
Oh, okay. So about 7 million for capital, but we'll go over those in more detail Monday.
We want to hold you in suspense.
Yeah.
As of right now, you see a decrease of $28 million to the budget.
A lot of that is ARPA, because we moved it to capital.
It's the one-time-only projects that are expensive, and they're probably falling off.
I was going to ask you about that, too, because I see that the rollover item for Are You OK, Scotty's House and Unspent Funding is on the sheet, projects rolling to 24. But we also have a, Are You OK, we are also picking up a $30,000 a year that's being added to our general fund moving forward.
But it's included in that rollover.
Right.
It started in '26.
Okay.
The county will start picking that up in '26.
Yep.
Well, '26, '27, yes.
Yep.
Okay. I'm a little confused then, because I thought that 30K was in here.
For one year.
Yes.
30K for one year, 30K for the next two also.
Right. But that starts in '26. I'm not sure I understand.
So we're going to use ARPA funds for the Are You OK up until the ARPA funds have to be spent, which is December 31st of 2026.
Gotcha. And, okay, so that's...
And then the county picks it up.
So that part's a wash.
Yes.
Until '26.
Correct. But we wanted to make sure that it was listed, so everybody knows that it's...
Yep, it's got to be budgeted.
Got it.
It has to be budgeted in the future.
Yeah, just wanted to know, you know, with the grant stuff, that we've talked about, Senate Bill 22, this, that, and the other, there's a lot, the TJJD.
Yes.
Their supplements.
We, and our Public Defender's Office.
Those future costs that the county might have to pick up?
Yeah.
You brought it up.
Okay.
Here we go. So TJJD is, we, okay, I don't know if you're aware, unfunded mandates in this last legislative session was not publicized as much as it was in previous. They shut us down on that. But both TJJD supplements and Senate Bill 22, nothing personal at all, are unfunded mandates, I think. Because I think what's going to happen is we're, they're going to give us funding for two years, but what about after that? I don't, and they are encouraging, at least with TJJD for sure, encouraging us to increase the employees' salaries. Well, that's very, very difficult to take away.
It's a lot.
And so that's going to increase your M and O in future years. Plus, we're going to be adding, I mean, when we start talking about known increases to the general fund budget, we're going to be adding positions for the medical examiner when we open that. We're going to be adding positions for 472nd District Court. We're going to be adding, as BISD and medical examiner come online, we're going to have to add about six positions at facility services. Let's see, so those are all, and then I don't know what we're going to do on Senate Bill 22. It kind of depends on what the sheriff and Commissioners Court wants to do, because from what I understand, we can use them to add positions. We already pay more than is required by Senate Bill 22, but we could use it to add positions or go ahead and use it to increase salaries. But again, it's only, I think it's 500,000, I think it's 500,000. And then plus the, who's going to pay the benefits, you know? And that's going to come into being January 1st of 2024.
Right.
I haven't budgeted a thing because they call it a grant.
Right.
A grant means we can increase the budget during the middle of the year.
And the Public Defender's Office ultimately goes into the same category. It's a different source of funds. It's not the legislature like the TJJD is and the Senate Bill 22 is.
Yes. I mean, we hope that we will get another grant for the Public Defender, a four-year grant after this one finishes at 9:30, 2024. We don't know that we will. I don't, I don't, I have no idea what Commissioners Court's going to want to do if they do not get that grant.
Well, and certainly, the legislature's not going to bind a following session of the legislature.
They can't.
They, you know...
Any more than we can. Y'all can, sorry.
I'll try.
Yeah.
Okay.
We didn't come up with the exact dollars, but...
Give or take.
Well, the other consideration is on Senate Bill 22, there is also an option for the district attorney and county attorney to apply.
And then constables, then constables.
There's one caveat, except they have, the constables have to be writing tickets.
And it's also, also the legislation for the constables offices requires a 75% match.
Oh, okay. Didn't know that part. Thank you.
This is all good.
Yes.
But it also puts a whole lot of what-ifs in our fiscal funding for the future.
For the TJJD portion, they start next month, and that's $245,000.
September 1st. They actually start September 1st.
Okay.
And there's going to be a supplement to their salary, always not tied to that position.
So just to share the little bit that I've heard and know about Senate Bill 22 is that first, the Lieutenant Governor spoke to the sheriffs last month and said that it is in the baseline budget and it's their intent to continue it. Now, any budget can be changed, but it's their intent to continue it. And we are in a unique position in that our salary, the way the legislation is worded, that three salaries have to be above thresholds before we can spend the money on anything else. Our detention officers, our deputies, and the sheriff exceed those minimum thresholds. And so that allows us to use the $500,000 for either other salary-related items or equipment. We are working to put together a request as part of that grant that will focus, at least in this first session, first biennium, and let me say that differently, because my understanding is, is it's 500,000 per year in the biennium, that is, we're looking at focusing on non-recurring items. And we'll continue to work on that.
Good. Well, I mean, and to ask the other question, this is pretty far down the road, but what happens when we go over a population of 300,000?
That it stops.
It would.
Right. It stops.
It's going to be difficult, decisions, you know, if I'm sorry to not, what does the court want to do with it? Several years ago, TJJD, they received a supplement grant, probably about six, seven years ago. And those supplements, they were tied to the people, not as much the positions. The court made a decision to, is that cost? If you want the exact dollars, I can go back and research, and I'll be more than happy to, you know...
Yeah, well, I just, is there a way, okay, with all this, TJJD, Public Defender's Office, Senate Bill 22, is there a way that we can have a assessment of a future unfunded liability?
A list of those totals?
Yeah, and just to make, well, I mean, we make a...
You want me to inflate it by interest?
Well, we make an actuarial...
Keep them on the radar.
I mean, just, I mean, not, not, we're not holding to the numbers, but I mean, I think that, you know, you know, hey, when we get to 300,000 population, I may not be here, I may be here. But I mean, at some point, we've got to have succession to where the decisions we make relative to these grant-oriented things, the public's aware, and particularly the people who are making the decisions that we've made are aware, too. Anyway, just a thought.
We can do a summary. I can inflate it all you want.
No, 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 don't go nuts with the figures, but I mean, you can tell...
But at the same time, what's, when are we going to hit 300,000?
Right.
I can look at Texas data, State Data Center to see when they're projecting we're going to hit 300,000. I strongly suspect they're going to project it by 2030. I don't know.
Throw it into the category of OPEB and other things.
And we have...
Well, do we?
They're considerations. They're always considerations.
And it's the what ifs, because it might not ever go away, which is a great thing. I'm glad that the state's helping certain, you know, positions that really need it.
I think it's great that they funded. I just don't want to be...
Just keep on putting it.
I don't want to be trying to dodge bullets, or commit, or commit Brazos County Future Commissioners Courts to having to try to dodge bullets.
Well, we are going to set it up as a grant, because when I heard about it, if, you know, the sheriff chooses to supplement salaries, we will set it up as a supplement so that we at least can keep track of how much it's costing.
That's why, that's perfect.
And that's the only, honestly, that's the only way we can increase the budget during the middle of the year is if it's a... the middle of the year is if it's a grant, or, there's two other ways, emergency and, and actually getting more than we budgeted, which is not as often as you think.
Super.
So at this moment, we're going to talk about things that are not in the budget as of today. Let's see, do you mind making that a little bit bigger, Ms. Katie?
I do not. There we go, how about that?
I know at the last discussion regarding merit award, there were some different numbers thrown around, so we wanted to go ahead and calculate that so it could be prepared. Commissioners Court approved a 4.5% COLA, additional 1.5% to make it a 6%, is a total of 1,903,416, and this is on top of the 4.5%.
This was to add, to add that to get to the 6% that was suggested?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
For the merit award, it's not in the budget at the moment, but to award a merit for 1% on top of the 4.5% currently, well, rephrase that, merit's based on FY '23 adopted salaries, we use that calculation to help distribute the merit. For 1%, it's an additional 478,000. We gave it another option, 2%, just to have it there, additional 952,000. Your smaller departments, say for instance, risk management, emergency management, they're only allowed to receive, or to award one merit, and usually just one step, and they have an office of more than one person, and so they're able to maybe give two people instead of just one, if it's, if it's a 2%. Not in the budget is the creation of the 472nd District Court, five positions with operational expenses could be up to 500,000 or maybe a little bit over. And we also discussed the positions that are not in the budget currently. Sheriff's Office Telecommunication Officer, also known as a dispatcher, 74,289. And these costs I'm about to go over, it also includes any operational expenses that they need, vests, radios, desk, telephones, licenses, so you can get the full picture. For the courthouse security deputy, 140,000, as well as risk management claim specialist, 86,824. Your grounds maintenance worker, 66,618. Your public defender, one, 122,711. Your juvenile defender, 132,539. Your reentry case worker, 94,083. Your juvenile supervision part-time, what they call a JSO, is like your detention worker, 26,888, and your records management full-time scanner, 62,929.
And I think we're officially open for questions done with the general fund for this round.
I just want to thank you for the job you've done preparing this, you've done a great job, and you've been very collaborative with the department heads and the sheriff's office, and we appreciate that.
Well, we've tried, I mean, it's not easy, and, you know, last year we added 18 positions. I do feel that some of that was, was based on, on format, so we changed the format a little bit to help maybe set some priorities. Not everybody's going to agree, and we know that, so we wanted to make sure you at least had the information on the ones that we didn't include. That doesn't mean anything, it's just doing the best we can.
I also wanted to support our decisions based on the data that we can show the reasons behind it, because that's, it's a hard decision.
Yeah, the, you had said, I believe, risk management did not want to talk about the position that was not funded, was that what you said earlier?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I was just curious if that was the same thing for the public defender?
No, I didn't tell him until today. Wasn't on purpose, I just.
No, no, I'm.
The grant won't fund them, and so I didn't tell him today, but we do have, I mean, we can get all that information for you when you're.
Yeah, I, I, it might be prudent to get some input there. I would like to have it if, if everybody else doesn't mind spending the time.
We have it on the, we have, on Monday on our, on the workshop, after we get through some other items, we put the general fund back on there, that way we can miss, you know, talk about anything that we have missed, say for instance, a public defender or any other items, so we could definitely invite them back Monday.
Thanks. All right, and we're, and the projection is that we're going to finish this year with a surplus of revenue over expenditures?
Yes, sir, that is the projection. Last year, we finished with the, excuse me, 21, 22, we finished with a $32 million excess of revenues over expenditures. This year, the projection is going to be 21 million.
All right.
On that 21.
Yes, ma'am.
How much of it is salary savings for positions that were not filled?
If you take 150 positions times a $57,000 a year, it's 8.5 million.
Okay.
But there's other ways to calculate it. Spencer came up with some other calculations that show it's about 5 million, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
But between 5 to 8.
Well, we, I think we'd had, in my review of the budget to actuals, and, and I was going to ask you that question, I'm glad I thought of that, what do we have for contingency for general fund?
For next year?
In, in this budget, yeah.
6 million.
6 million, okay, it was 4.5 million last year, okay, and now it's up to 6 million.
It's up to 6.
Okay, and we've used maybe 2.5 million of that?
I did it this morning, I can, I can.
Well, I'll, I'll look at the, I'll look at the budget to actuals.
I have it.
But then, and then in capital contingency, we had 11.5 million, and we've used about nine, we've still got about nine of that left?
Remember, portion of that was at 7 million, based on the tax rate?
Yes, yes.
And so.
But that was, but that's in the calculation of it was funded, but it was.
We made sure we kept it separate, so we have not touched that money so it could disappear.
Okay.
Right.
And we haven't, so we've still got about 2.5 million, I guess, to use there?
For general, for the capital improvement fund?
Right.
It's going to be a little bit less, because we have been expensing it lately to cover for vehicles that we did purchase for next year.
Okay.
And as well as equipment, we just increased the courthouse security, they needed a change order, so we're still using it, but it's not going to be, it's going to be a lot less than what we budgeted, so.
Okay, so what do we, so what are we building in for our capital contingency?
For next year, we are using 4 million.
4 million, okay, it was 4.5, then it went to, it went to 11.5.
And then we're going back to 4.
Okay.
But we'll have more details on that Monday.
Okay.
All right. I appreciate everything y'all have done.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we will adjourn.
You have questions, let us know.
Okay.
And don't forget Monday. See y'all Monday.
Yes.